Yeah, it is. But it happens.
Matter of fact, when you ask who they recommend.
Hey. So, all right? Hanging in there. Are you yourself?
Good. How are you, sir?
I don't...
What's up, Chris?
Hi.
Take care, Ben.
How you doing?
All right.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. Thank everybody for coming. We've got a great full house tonight. That's good to see. Happy October. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Connect for our invocation leaders in the place of allegiance to start our meeting.
May I have our heads to take a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Thank you.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Connect. At this time, are there any additional items to be added to the agenda or changes in the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I have three.
Okay.
Under new business, item B, we're going to pull the presentation on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We're going to add an item that's repairs to the courthouse where we had a pipe leak and cleanup last week. And also, we need to add Bill Tanger. He was here from FEMA to give us an update on his work after the storm.
Okay, so let's... Okay, again, under new business, item B, with the Parks and Rec Plan, we're going to take that up at the next meeting. Under new business, the last item will be the emergency bid for the pipe rupture at the clerk's office. And you have that abstract at your place. And then, let's do, because of his time, and he's got a lot of other things to do this evening, after public comments, we'll introduce our FEMA rep, Mr. Bill Tanger, and let him say a few words after public comments.
I've got a question.
Okay, sure.
With the... I don't know what is it? The planning board, I realize, I believe that the airport overlay is a different subject matter, so it won't be covered in this discussion, or will it?
No. Um, do... Go ahead.
No, I'm just trying to get clarity, because if it is, I have some specific questions regarding the airport overlay.
Okay.
And if it's not, then I certainly want to have a discussion in the future about it.
Okay. Do you want to do that commissioner comments, or just at a later meeting?
Whatever, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Okay. Are any other additions to the agenda? Okay?
You can make a closed session, add a closed session.
Right. Do we have...
I think it's been marks.
Yeah. Is that... Is that for the closed session?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to go ahead and add, we need to add a closed session at the very end.
The agenda, the...
Yes. Okay, anything else? Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of consent agenda? Any changes to that?
Madam Chairman, I think the board wanted to pull item M.
Yes.
For discussion.
And if, at the pleasure of the board, if we can pull item M out of the consent agenda, that's the mosquito abatement, and make that the new item A, plus you, under new business.
I move.
Okay? Any other changes to the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay. We will move into our public hearings for this evening. And at this time, I'll call on Mr. David Montgomery for our joint public hearing with Lee County Planning Board for the Future Land Use Plan, and that's on pages 91 and 92 of your agenda. Good evening.
Good evening. County Chair and County Commissioners. This will be our second public hearing for the land use plan. If you recall, the last time we had the public hearing, it was the day after the hurricane. And at your behest, we held, we're holding a second public hearing on that. I don't want to go into Mr. Epley's presentation that he did last time, but I do just kind of want to hit some of the highlights, just to remind you that this is a broad policy guide. This is a snapshot in time of how the county and its municipalities envision itself to be the next 15 or 20 years. It helps you as elected officials, planning boards, and planning staff provide guidance for development and redevelopment of land throughout the community as decisions are made regarding not only the use of the land, but the character of the land and how it's developed. At the onset of this, I was given the guidance that we wanted to make this a lot more user-friendly and easy for the layman to understand. After several iterations of this through a two-year process, I think we've reached that threshold. We did do a series of stakeholder interviews at the beginning, four public workshops at the beginning, and two public meetings after the draft plan was available. Consulted with our, all our planning boards during this process. And as you know, the Joint Planning Commission served as the steering committee through this process, and that board met about seven or eight times as well. The plan has established a vision. Key themes were identified, objectives created. A future land, a future land use map was created using place types. It's a little different than what we're used to, to give people the sense of what exactly was the expectation. We use a lot of imagery and simple words to kind of describe those place types. And then, the last section of the plan was devoted to reasonable strategies for implementation. Just want to let you know where we are with the other boards. The City of Sanford Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval, and the city council approved the plan at their last meeting. In regards to the town of Broadway, made that presentation to them. The Planning Commission has recommended approval, but the board will not consider that for adoption until the end of this month. Also, in the meantime, received an email from Bob Hutes, and that's presented to you by a gentleman, Bryant Stoneham, who has requested for his properties to not only be included in the airport overlay, but to be identified as an industrial use. So, it does have a little bit to do with the plan, but as Commissioner Reeves mentioned, the actual over, airport overlay will come out at a later time. I did want to bring that to your attention. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Chair and members of the board, one concern I have is, it appears that during the summer of 2016 is when we had the stakeholder meeting. I can't speak for any of you, but I can better remember what happened Sunday. And so, I say that in all honesty, that there needs to be a revisit so that people in general will understand what it is we're being asked to do. If you start talking about 15 to 20 years out, as quickly as things are changing around here, I think we look at a situation on Broadway Road where we agreed some time ago, years ago, that we ought to go ahead and four-lane it. Now, we spent $23 million on a community college and really need that money to go on the road over at Kelly Drive. So, things change rapidly. We don't have that kind of foresight, unfortunately. So, I'm not prepared to make any kind of recommendation if it comes to that tonight in terms of supporting this change without further meetings of the public so that we have a better opportunity for folks to understand what it is we're trying to do, because I'm not real clear.
I think, David, we had two or three open sessions there at the Buggy Factory.
Correct.
Recently, you know, for people to come. But are, I mean, just to be clear, are you talking about kind of doing what we did to start with in 2016 of going to the Deep River Community, the Greenwood Community, Broadway?
About to make a recommendation to pass.
Right, right. You know?
At least the public will have an opportunity, should they decide to partake, to do so.
Well, I think, you know, and I don't, you know, I agree with Commissioner Reeves. It's been a long, that seems like yesterday in some ways, and then a long time. But there is some benefit to having them in the communities, especially when they're around the schools or that kind of thing, as far as getting the word out. I think, we had really better attendance at those, didn't we, David?
It was, it was about the same.
About the same?
Yes. I do want to point out, and it gets to Mr. Reeves' question, which is a very good one, is now that we have the Joint Planning Commission, there's an institutional body there that we're going to have that's going to review this plan on an annual basis. And then, the idea is, when the new census data comes out, is that we're going to do a, really look at this and see if there are major modifications that need to be made. But with that, with the system that we have, we have a body there to review this so that as changes are made, we can say, okay, you're right. All the expansion at the, at the community college warrants maybe us rethinking this.
And in addition to that, and this is the first time I've seen this memo from Bob Hutes regarding Mr. Stoneham request, you may have several people out in that area who would like to do the same thing. And so, I, that's one reason I would like to have more discussions about airport outfit as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for our second hearing on the Lee County Planning Board for Future Land Use Plan. Is anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the land use plan? Anyone that would like to speak against? Okay.
Is there a neutral choice?
Sure. Sure, Laura, come on, you know.
Anybody in the middle?
Yeah. I mean, that, yes. Sometimes there does need to be a C on the yes. If you could just state your name and your address for record.
Laura Young, 3400 Deep River Road. I just want to comment that I have not seen the plan, and I wonder if there's a way to get word out to people maybe more effectively, and I don't know if notices in tax bills or notices in water bills or something that would reach more people.
Okay.
Because I've heard nothing.
Okay. Fair point. And that's, that's something that we talk a lot about is communication now in this in-between age between newspapers, radio, and traditional TV and social media. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak, against?
Four.
Okay. I'll close this public hearing. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to one of the best parts of our jobs. Now, are they out, are the young folks outside?
You might want to do a switcheroo here between the planning.
Yes. If everybody will just bear with us for a few minutes, and we'll excuse our planning board, thank you, thank you, thank you for your service. And, and we'll let our young people that have been patiently and sounds like excitedly waiting outside come in the room.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The public hearing, be able to speak, is, is, is that completely over?
The public comments?
Yes, ma'am.
No, sir, that'll be just after this with the ball teams.
All right. I just want to make sure that...
That's fine, that's fine. I know it's a little discombobulated today, no worries. Yeah.
Madam Chair, you want all of them, or you want the...
If, if, I tell you, if, if they're the 14 and up team, we'll bring those, if you don't mind, sorry. Oh, yeah, that's right, it is 14. I said that incorrectly, sorry. Yeah, they do, they'll know. Come on, gentlemen, just, just follow up, yes, listen to Mr. Crumpden, he will just bring you on in and direct you. It's a good-looking group here. Hi, gentlemen. Hey, how are you? Okay. Like I said, this is one of the best parts of this job. Tonight, it is our board's pleasure to do a proclamation recognizing the Lee County Parks and Recreation 14 and Under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team. Mr. John Payne, do you want to say a couple of words?
Just a couple?
Just a couple, just a couple.
All right. We're proud of all of our kids that come and play in our programs, and especially when they can achieve some success playing against folks from other areas. It's, it's great. So, we appreciate their efforts and appreciate the coaches and volunteers and parents for their support of them. And obviously, when you get to this age, you're busy and a lot of them are into other things, and you'll see that in the under-8s as well later, because some of them are practicing for other sports or other activities. So, we're proud of you and just wanted to recognize you.
Okay, if you'll just stay right where you are for a minute and let me read the proclamation for the record so that when you're, you know, 60 years old, you can look it up and you'll still be on record here. The Lee County Board of Commissioners proclamation, whereas the Lee County Parks and Recreation 14 and Under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team exhibited hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry in the statewide Athletic Committee 14 U State Tournament. And whereas the 14 U All-Stars won the 2018 statewide Athletic Committee 14 Under State Championship in Pembroke, North Carolina. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Travis Seymour and assistant coaches Stephen Brown and James Baker, the team was able to go undefeated with victories over Lumber River North and Lumber River South to advance to the championship game and defeated Lumber River East to win the championship game. And whereas, the Lee County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Lee County Parks and Recreation 14 and Under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team members Dylan Brown, Griffin Matthews, Brandon Crabtree, Jerry Crabtree, James Baker, Silas McKeever, Braden Phillips, Andre Barbury, Landon Johnson, Jesse Mitchell, and Jesse Wilkerson for the accomplishments they demonstrated over the past several months and for their commitment, perseverance, and love of the sport of baseball. And whereas, the 14 U team represented Lee County admirably in the 2018 SWAC State Tournament in Pembroke, North Carolina to close out a remarkable 2018 baseball season dated this, the 15th day of October 2015, we are so proud of you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to hand this off to your coaches, and while I do that, I need a motion to accept those presented.
So, moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. Congratulations, you're, congratulations. Congratulations, you all work so hard. They have to go.
Come on, you're running.
They're moving over.
Do the other commissioners want to?
No.
Yeah, we can play ball.
I cannot see you, Commissioner Gold, if you can move to my right just a little. Okay? Ready? And Mr. Stone, if you can move to the left, if you can, Mr. Reeves, if you can both shift left just a little.
Your right.
Sorry? Okay, ready? One, two, three.
You're the man. Congratulations.
Ah, some good looking young men. Yeah, just come on up here. Okay, this, again, a great, a great night in, in Lee County athletic history. At, at this time, I would like to present a proclamation recognizing the Lee County Parks and Recreation eight and under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team. Mr. Payne?
Yes ma'am. We try and get them early and get them to love the sport, but the coaches that work with them go a long ways in helping with that and we certainly appreciate their efforts in, in keeping it fun. So, it's always a joy to see them have success and that's the coach's main thing. A, a great coach is a great teacher and he puts folks in the right place to, so they can be successful. So, we appreciate that.
All right. And if, if you gentlemen will stay right there, I'm going to read the proclamation so that you will be on record for, for history in Lee County. The Lee County Board of Commissioners proclamation, whereas the Lee County Parks and Recreation eight and under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team exhibited hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry in the statewide Athletic Committee eight U State Tournament. And whereas, the eight U All-Stars won the 2018 statewide Athletic Committee eight U State Championship in Aberdeen, North Carolina with wins over Fuquay, Sandhills, and Onslow County. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Bill Shuey and assistant coaches Daryl Kelly, Fred Lawson, and Michael Lugo, the team was able to go undefeated with victories over Fuquay and Sandhills in the first two games, then beating Onslow twice to advance to the championship game and to win the championship game. And whereas, the Lee County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Lee County Parks and Recreation eight U All-Stars Youth Baseball Team members Troy Lugo, Wyatt McAllister, Rika Rochelle, Ethan Almazar, Mason Klein, Mason Hayes, Kayden Jennings, Elijah Kelly, Xavier Kelly, Takirion Shepard, Braden Shuey, and Seth Stringfield for the accomplishments they demonstrated over the past several months and for their commitment, perseverance, and love of the sport of baseball. And whereas, the eight U team represented the Lee County, represented Lee County admirably in the 2018 SWAC State Tournament in Aberdeen to close out a remarkable 2018 baseball season dated this, the fifteenth day of October, 2018. We are super proud of you guys. As I present this to your coaches, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. I would like to ask for a motion to approve as presented our proclamation.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And we want to see you guys next year all the way up to when you're fourteen and under like the guys that came in first, okay? Good job.
Thank you very much, Friday hard work, guys.
One, two, three. Okay, all right. One, two, three. Okay, we're good.
Congratulations, guys.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you guys, thank you guys. Good job, coaches.
Good job, Fred.
That's going, man, you're all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you for working this out, thanks Bill, take care.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. A little plug in, go both sides, but anyway. All right, I'm sorry, I'm still excited about last night's game. Okay, we're going to move on to the public comments now. And as I call your name, just kind of a reminder of our policy, when you come to the podium, if you'll just give your name and your address for our clerk, for our public record, and if you'll limit your comments to three minutes and our attorney will be keeping time. So, our first person for public comments is Mr. Bobby Riddle. Good evening.
Good evening. I, I hope that I can keep my comments to three minutes here. This is something that is very important to me and my family because we are probably as much impacted on this Little River Quarry that they have decided to put in. And my biggest problem that I have right now is the lawyer that, that you guys have retained on this has said that he doesn't want any conditions added to this other than what Little River Quarry has already set. And I just find that terribly hard to understand. I'm wondering who is paying this lawyer and, and why he would not allow this commission, these commissioners to make conditions on, on this thing. So, real quickly, I, I'm assuming that Mr. Ray Covington is not here or anybody that's representing the, the Little River Quarry. Is anybody here from them? Because I would like to ask them a question.
Madam Chair needs to be directing the comments to the board.
The, the first thing I'd like to say is, will, will this quarry ever drop our water table? Because my property is so close to this quarry that I can actually throw a rock and hit it. That's how close I am. I, I know there's been a lot of talk in the newspaper about, about Carolina Trace and they're across eighty-seven from where it's at, but I am right there on top of it on family property that has been passed down in generations. So, that would be my first question. Because I have had to spend over five thousand dollars putting in a deep well just within the past few years because of the water table dropping. And if they start pumping thousands and millions of gallons of water out of the ground like Martin Marietta is in Wyman Springs, we're going to have the same problem with water table dropping again. So, the other thing is, you know, are we going to be able to hear this, me being so close? And, and can you put a value on clean water? Can anybody in here put a value on clean water? I, I don't think we can. So, here's, I have, I have, if you'll bear with me, I have five conditions that I would like to read off to you. And, and they're fairly short here, so just bear with me. Number one, sound barriers should be installed if we can hear working going on at the quarry. Because in all of these hearings, they have said, nobody's going to hear anything because they're going to make sure of it. Number two, there will be no dust or other airborne debris on my property and testing should be done yearly, okay? Number three, if at any time my water quality or anyone within a mile of the property line of any part of the quarry goes below the current testing that it is right now, my water was tested when the well was put in and it was very good water, I think Little, Little River Quarry LLC should pay the owners and their heirs in the sum of a hundred thousand dollars and a lump sum and fifty thousand dollars a year after that for the lifetime of us, our daughters and, and sons.
Mr. Riddle, in fairness to everybody, we have to stick with the three-
Please, two more.
Is there a way, we have, we have to follow the policy, I'm sorry, but can you, if you'll leave that with us-
That's all I have left right here.
If you can leave that with us or if you can email it to us, we will certainly use it here.
Madam Chair, don't we have a way to get a staff person to go make copy right quick?
Can we get, have a copy of it?
Can we do that, do you mind?
Yes ma'am. I, I just want everyone here to understand that I live right there, right on it, and-
Sure, we do.
And, and for them to not want us to have conditions on this, I think is crazy.
We, we understand.
It's absolutely crazy.
But in, in fairness to everybody, we have to follow the policy. Thank you, but we will, we'll make copies for all of us to have. And please feel free to call or email any of us, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you.
Sure. Sharwin Blatterman, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing that correctly.
You did a beautiful job.
Thanks.
Not everybody does. My name is Sharwin Blatterman, I live at For the Point in Sanford. In my opinion, Mr. Yarborough is entirely mistaken in his view that the Lee County Board of Adjustments has no authority to consider or propose conditions to be met in order for a special use permit to be issued to Little River LLC. It seems to me that when our BOA denied the Little River special use permit, their denial essentially said that the conditions proposed by Mr. Covington were not adequate to protect the environment and residents of Lee County. In that case, it would be the duty of the BOA to consider or propose conditions that adequately and appropriately address those issues. In the corporate world, it is a lawyer's job to find a way to legally do what management wants to do, not to be a naysayer. Mr. Yarborough's job should be to support this Board of Commissioners and their expressed wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blatterman. Mr. Kermit Keaton?
Oh, Keeter.
Keeter, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's all right. For the record, I grew up Shelby, North Carolina, and back in the fifties, when I was playing sports and started playing sports, we knew about Lee County and we knew about Lee County baseball. So, that reputation has been going on for a long time.
It has, it has.
I'm just supporting what others have said before me. I don't know any of you personally, but my goodness, I've been before you so many times, I can't count how many there's been. I know that you value your citizens, I know you value the welfare, and I know you're about inclusion. You've done everything you can do to give us, your citizens, an opportunity to add input. That's what we're asking for today, for you to stick with what you are and not let whatever has motivated this attempt to muffle the ability of your own Board of Adjustment to possibly consider and make conditions of their own and for those like Mr. Riddle, who really is in jeopardy, I think, and those of us are three thousand, is it, in Carolina Trace across the way, to please listen to what we have as possible conditions. We're just trying to make it safer and we're trying to mitigate what losses might occur. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keeter. Now, you, you're two, three, one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay.
Two, three, two, three, one, late due.
Late due drive?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Okay, I know, you're fine. Did you get it, two, three, one, let it be? Okay, Mr. Jerry Merritt?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sure you're all getting tired of this issue and we all are. And we all felt very comfortable that we were moving towards a resolution up until a meeting occurred last Thursday in the county attorney's office when, as Mr. Riddle explained in that conference, the representative from Little River expressed her belief that the order from the Superior, the Court of Appeals dictated that only the conditions proposed by Little River should be considered by the Board of Adjustments. Our attorney, representing Carolina Trace and another living, has vehemently disagreed. Unfortunately, the attorney that you had hired for advice and consent concurred with, with Little River in complete contradiction to state law, which stipulates that the special, the Board of Adjustments has every right to impose any conditions that are considered reasonable on a special use permit. And complete contradiction to what the Court of Appeals stated in their remand was that the Board of Commissioners should consider any conditions required to issue the permit, not the Little River conditions, which by the way, had none of the concerns that Mr. Riddle has addressed in their conditions. Mr. Yarborough was hired to be, provide advice and consent to the Board of Adjustments, but at the end of the day, the Board of Adjustments is the only Lee County body that can ensure the safety and welfare of the citizens of Lee County who live in close proximity to the quarry. And I would ask that you remind the county attorney of that responsibility and allow the Board of Adjustments, encourage the Board of Adjustments, to consider any conditions. We've been working on conditions. We pared the list down to a very reasonable list and we're prepared to share them with Little River. Many of you know that a motion was filed Friday to Superior Court asking them to resolve the, the question, which is foolishness. It's going to cost the county money, it's going to cost Carolina Trace money. That motion could be withdrawn if the county attorney and the Board of Adjustments would agree that they would consider all conditions and any conditions submitted. They don't need to have hearings, you just simply need to receive the conditions, review it. If they need advice and consent, they could certainly get it from people that have given there. Their record is over three thousand pages long. Those of us that have been opposed to it have been working for months to court, to, to pull out the conditions that are important and, you know, get rid of ones that we knew that we had no chance of getting approved. I think they're very reasonable and I think it would be a great disservice to the citizens of Lee County if the Board of Adjustments cannot do their job, which is actually mandated by state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
Okay, Ms. Laura Young?
It's Laura Young, 3400 Deep River Road. I'm here today to ask you all to reconsider the spraying for mosquitoes plan. It's my observation, working outside every day, that the population of mosquitoes is already in decline. It's not a species that carries human disease and nobody in the county has been reported ill due to the mosquitoes. Natural control by frost is coming soon and I would characterize the mosquitoes as a nuisance rather than a danger and it's an unnecessary use of public funds. I looked up this chemical, I have an insecticide fact sheet and I want to share just a few points from it and then I'll leave the entire sheet with you all. The U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention has written that application of chemicals to kill adult mosquitoes by ground or aerial application is usually the least effective mosquito control technique. It's been successful in achieving short-term reductions in mosquito abundance, but populations of disease-carrying mosquitoes of concern increased fifteenfold over eleven years of spraying in New York. The breakdown product of the chemical is called dichloravose. It interferes with prenatal brain development. It's also causes cancer, according to the International Agency for Research on Carcinogens. The aerial application can drift up to a half mile. Exposure has effects on behavior, including reduced muscle strength, slow responses to stimulation, and increased aggression and impaired memory. It's more potent when exposure occurs through breathing. It can be passed from mothers to their offspring through nursing. It can cause genetic damage. In children, exposure's been linked with increased cancer risks. Both Nalad and its breakdown product inhibited an enzyme in white blood cells, which is important in the white blood cells eliminating virus-infected cells from our bodies and monitoring for precancer cells. I'm not a scientist. Because it's a broad-spectrum insecticide, it's not surprising that it impacts all insects, including beneficial insects, honeybees, other bees, parasitic wasps, predatory insects of things that are dangerous for agriculture. According to the EPA, it's toxic to some fish species that are sport fish, including bass. Let's see. It puts endangered species at risk. So again, I'd like to ask you to reconsider. I think it's a poor use of public funds and I hope that we'll reconsider doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Mr. Jim Rosenstiel?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Jim Rosenstiel, 1509 Dakota Loop. I'm here to echo the last speaker's concerns about aerial spraying of mosquitoes. I'm a beekeeper. I am executive director of Brick City Bees that work closely with the city council to bring downtown beekeeping to Sanford. Also the president of the Lee County Beekeepers Association-
It puts endangered species at risk. So again, I'd like to ask you to reconsider. I think it's a poor use of public funds, and I hope that we'll reconsider doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Jim Rosenstiel?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jim Rosenstiel, 1509 Dakota Loop. I'm here to echo the last speaker's concerns about aerial spraying of mosquitoes. I'm a beekeeper. I am Executive Director of Brick City Bees that work closely with the city council to bring downtown beekeeping to Sanford. Also, the President of the Lee County Beekeepers Association, with roughly about 30-ish active members, averaging about two colonies apiece. And then others that are in the county that aren't official members, but we're talking hundreds of beehives in this county. And we are very concerned about what's going on. If you can hear my voice, I'm physically exhausted and mentally exhausted from preparing beehives all weekend for this event. It's like herding cats. You can imagine what it's like trying to wrestle bees into a beehive, it doesn't happen. I've had to close bottom boards. I've had to close entrances. Tomorrow night, I get to spend my evening wrapping these in tarps, just trying to do the best job I can to keep this poison out of the beehives. And I echo your concerns that the funds can be, it just seems like we've got the money to do it, and we're just spending it just to spend it. The colder temperatures, like I said, I've spent my weekend in Thai grass and working these beehives. I've not seen anything that would be considered a spike in mosquitoes. Yes, they're out there. But I didn't hear of any sort of a malaria or Zika outbreak in the county, unless I missed something on the news that would warrant aerial bombardment of 80% of the county. So I'm asking again to please reconsider this action and so I can get some rest tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Summers?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jesse Summers, 710 McNeil Road. And I'm here also to talk about the spraying of the mosquitoes, and I'm highly against it. I'm also an environmental educator, and I teach children about beneficial insects, which are honeybees, butterflies, hummingbirds. And I try to relay to them how these beneficial insects affect all of us. When we don't have strawberry pop tarts with strawberries inside, that's because we don't have any bees left. So there's so many things that we go to the grocery store and buy and don't realize that it's become, it's because of these insects that this spray will kill these insects. This weekend, I had monarch butterflies flying through my backyard. They're going to South America. Those also are beneficial. And also in jeopardy of being killed with this insecticide. And it's just not for mosquitoes. And I too work outside. I have an organic garden. And I plant for pollinators. And they were everywhere this weekend. And they might be under a tiny little leaf, but that, you know, when that spray comes down, and I know it attaches to the insect, it'll still hit those. And these are beneficial and need for every day for our food. And I didn't get that bit this much this weekend either, because I'm always outside, but I'm always in long-sleeve shirts and long pants. And they can bite through your socks, but nobody bit me this week. I think I might have had one or two. I did get attacked this, today, when I was out in the woods at Jordan Lake. So they're out during the day. But I know this weekend proved that they're not going to be year-round much longer. Plus with these mosquitoes, they're laying eggs into the water. And so when those happen, and those are hatched, are we going to spray again? So is this the only spray, or is it going to be continuous? So if you're going to wait for the cold weather to get the eggs, then you can wait for the cold weather to get the adults too, because they are on the down.
Thank you, ma'am.
And also, if I can, it'd be nice if Lee County did front and back and saved paper.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. We appreciate you coming out. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Bill Tanger, who is our FEMA representative, to give us an update on what's going on from your perspective in our county. Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bill Tanger. I'd give you an address, but it would be like, I live in a van, not by the river.
He did come around and leave his card for all the Commissioners.
You'll notice it has no address.
I did, but I'd see how to get up with you.
Well, you know, FEMA people are like gypsies. We go around and around, different places. Most of the time, they're not the places you would go. But anyway, I am, my role in FEMA is Intergovernmental Affairs. And as such, I'm responsible for you people and to administrative managers as well for any questions or issues or problems that may arise with your constituents. I have provided, with the help of Jennifer, some handouts that cover a half a dozen of FEMA programs. There are other ones, but I'm just going to be mercifully brief and give you a thumbnail sketch and let you move on to other things. So let me just say, and, you know, Lee County is not too badly hit compared to others. Put it in perspective, you've had about 480 people register in Lee County for FEMA assistance, whereas there are four or five other counties that have over 10,000 people have registered. We have to count our blessings. I did want to mention, there are a couple of new programs coming out that you might hear about and that they don't necessarily apply to Lee County. And one is temporary housing. And that involves mobile homes and double wides and that sort of thing. And that has just been approved, I think, yesterday, today, for 10 different counties. Lee County's not one of them. So when you hear about it, it will not include Lee County. There are 31 counties approved for individual assistance, 41 counties approved for public assistance. And I know you've been through a recent flood a couple of years ago, disaster. But just to round things up, basically FEMA's programs are pretty much divided, half of them individual and half of them public assistance. The money that's spent by FEMA and the government on these programs is probably about, divided about half and half, to oversimplify it a little bit. But on the individual assistance, most of the money goes for housing, temporary housing, excuse me, hotels, whatever else can be put together. And of course, in public assistance, most of it goes to infrastructure. And in these handouts here, you'll have a couple of programs about individual assistance, one about filing a flood insurance claim. Then the others are about public assistance and hazard mitigation programs. I am your go-to person if you have any constituents or if you have any questions or issues. And you've got my contact information. Should I get moved out to Florida, I will be certainly letting everyone know who my replacement is, but you've got that contact. I'll leave you with this one thought. I just came back from a disaster. I was in 80 days in the Virgin Islands. We had, for the first 30 days, no electricity, no internet, all the towers are down, no water, no food, no banks, no grocery stores. So I want to encourage each of you, even though you're not normally responsible for some of these programs, to keep a hard copy. In FEMA world, we have a go-kit. When we get a call in the morning, get on a plane in the afternoon, and we have our kit already ready to go. So I highly recommend you, you all, keep a little folder on FEMA stuff when the lights are out, when there's no power, water, and that sort of thing. Question?
I was giving you a bottle of water.
I might take that. I'll also take any business cards from any of you who haven't given them.
Any questions for Mr. Tanger?
Any questions? And you know where to get me.
We do.
All right. I feel it is mercifully brief.
Well, we appreciate you being here. We know you've had a very long day, and especially coming off your Virgin Islands trip. But we thank you for being here and for helping our citizens.
I appreciate it.
Makes a big difference.
The thought keeps us going. If I just get you to call my wife and encourage her to let me stay a little while.
We'll tell her you're doing a good job.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on into Old Business, Item A. The consideration of a donation of land located on Linden Avenue to the Sanford Housing Authority. That's on page 97 of your agenda, Ms. Parrish.
Yes, and just for the record, this was on the last agenda, but did the third one be moved to this agenda? On page 114 of the agenda, you'll see the subject property. It's right off of Linden Avenue. And just to give the Board some background information for those who may not have been on the board at the time. It's a, there's three lots, 55, 56, and 54. Two of the lots have a building. You'll see that long building that's right there. That is a building that back in 2012, the Board at that time sold lots 55 and 56 to the Sanford Housing Authority. At that time, they sold it for $40,000. And as part of that sale, there were many conditions, which are also included in your agenda package, that went along with the sale in terms of the property having to be used for low and moderate income housing. And all those conditions are part of the deed restrictions. Some time ago, we had an individual who had contacted the county and referenced the purchasing lot 54 through the surplus property. And it was suggested that we inquire to the Sanford Housing Authority to see if they were interested in that lot, just because it is adjacent to the other two lots. I don't know, I wasn't here at that time, so I'm not certain as to why that third lot wasn't sold as part of that original transaction. So unfortunately, I can't speak to that. But the Housing Authority, by way of its executive director, had indicated that they were interested in it, you know, for a nominal price, a dollar. Re searched the statutes to determine whether or not we could donate to a nonprofit such as that. And we can, as long as we put those same types of restrictions in there that it can only be used for low and moderate income housing and ensure that it's being used for a public purpose. So where we stand tonight is, I brought, I wanted to bring it in front of the Board to get some direction as to what the Board would like to do with that property. If the Board is interested in moving forward, then I can reach out to the Housing Authority's attorney to work out some of the procedural details and make sure everything, all the transaction is done according to, you know, to the law. And I know as part of the statutory guidance, we would have to notify, we'd have to file a resolution, and we would also have to advertise it in the newspaper, and the closing wouldn't occur for 10 days. So it would take us a little time to get it all ready, get those conversations had. But before I move forward with it, I just sort of wanted direction from the Board. I said this is something we're interested in.
Why do you have to advertise it?
It's part of, one of the statutory requirements.
What are you advertising it for? Just let people know what you're doing? Now, what was the person that was interested in that lot? Somebody was interested in purchasing that lot?
Yeah. One of the, if you see the homeowner, I believe, I believe he was the homeowner on the other side of the lot.
Questions or discussions? So essentially, based on what I've been talking with Ms. Parrish, is, you know, as she said, it's not necessarily a vote tonight to make the donation, but it does need to be a motion to instruct her to move forward to get more information from their attorneys.
I'll offer that motion.
And then bring it back to us in November to see. Okay. Yes. Because we're not, I don't think we're quite there to make a vote yet. We've got to have some more information, but we've got to give her direction as to whether she needs to move forward or not. Any other questions or anything on that? Mr. Reeves has offered that motion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Item B, under Old Business. Request for approval of proposal from Triangle J Council of Governments for managing a value-added ag district for Chatham, Hornet, Lee, and Johnston Counties. That's on page, sorry, 115 to 117. And I guess, Mr. Crump, are you going to take this one? This is the study only.
The Increasing Value Added Agricultural Report was presented last month by Mr. Stone. He was here tonight. And at the same time, we presented a proposal from Triangle J to market the four county area of Johnston, Lee, Hornet, and Chatham. The end result is to create a food manufacturing region that supports the farming community in these four counties. What we're being asked to consider tonight is the first year of a program with Triangle J, where they will manage the value-added agricultural district for the four counties. So in the first year, they have six tasks laid out. Establishing and convening a steering committee, identify and align agricultural districts, efforts with ongoing activities, host a legislative meeting, convene focus groups, assist with website development and design. And they will continue with the ongoing maintenance and explore funding opportunities and grants for creating a district. So the budget impact for the first year is $22,500, split four ways. That means each county is being asked to contribute $5,625 in the first year. Hornet has already approved. Chatham was to discuss it today. I don't know what the end result there was, but staff believed it was going to be a favorable result.
We will approve the proposal and authorize the manager's signed agreement.
Any questions or discussion?
This is going to be for a three-year period? Is that right?
We're really only committing to one.
To one year at a time. This is essentially just for the study and, yeah. Just to see if there's viability before we move forward too much further.
I'd like to see us do it from a discussion standpoint to support the local agriculture community, but also, you know, helping to enhance the regionalism with the four counties working together. If one county were to land a business, all counties could hopefully benefit from an agricultural standpoint. And so I'd like for us to support that. I definitely do.
I know we've had this story before, but, you know, got a farmer, I think he's in Hornet County, and he actually has to send the peas that he harvests to somewhere, I think, Ohio or Iowa, just to be packaged and frozen, you know, because there's no value-added industry here in, you know, a heavily agricultural area. So this is something that the Commissioner of Agriculture is very supportive of, and of course, Triangle J, so. We need to preserve our farms, I think. Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business. And remember, we kind of slid things around a little bit. So our new business item will be our mosquito abatement with Mr. King. And I know he provided us with some maps.
It's also a packet of information.
Right, right.
Should be at your desk.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, good evening.
Learned a lot about mosquitoes
Learned a lot about mosquitoes in the last week and a half, two weeks.
Yes.
I'd like to give you kind of a timeline of this process, just to kind of give everybody an update on where we are. We received some funding late September for mosquito abatement, basically, whether it be aerial spraying, ground spraying, or anything of that, to establish or enhance our integrated mosquito management program. Since Lee County doesn't have one, again, it's an opportunity to look at some things to possibly, possibly do. Environmental Health, which my supervisor, our director is sitting on the back row tonight in case we have any questions that I might not can answer, basically took staff out for a period of days, almost a week and a half, and we did landing counts in mornings and evenings. What you see, one of those maps in front of you this evening is, with the red dots on it specifically, are all the complaints we received and a majority of the sites we went to and actually did landing counts for. One of the gentlemen doing the landing counts...
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Explain the landing count.
They stand in a spot, and basically mosquitoes land on them for up to a minute, and they try to count how many is there. That's how, that's determined. There were some areas, I want to think on the greenway, that were 200 plus in almost a minute.
I think that should qualify you for hazard pay, in my opinion.
The outfit they were wearing, they were covered completely, but they were being landed in quite a bit.
Oh, wow. Yes.
But the challenge we had, there was X amount of dollars here to do this, and to treat the entire county was going to be over that amount. So we had to start looking at shrinking back some of that area. While the comment was made earlier about 80% of the county, it's actually not, it's just 80% of the population. It's not 80% of the county. It's more of, I think we had 52 to 56% of the county actually being sprayed. After that, October 9th, there was a public health nuisance declared by me that put into effect an emergency situation where this abatement could move forward. That was given to the board last Wednesday night. Dr. Sheller, Board Chair, had consultation with State Entomologist Michael Doyle, and also NCDAs, quite a few conversations. She brought back a report to the board that, understanding she is a beekeeper as well, but knowing that this, at the amount this being sprayed for, wanted to see this through and move forward with the agreement agenda. And that's, was approved to come to the Commissioners tonight. I did provide, Mr. Crumpton provided some information with EPA. This will be sprayed at one ounce per acre. It will dissipate in two to three hours after spraying. They're looking, if the board approves to do so, the aerial spraying, looking at tomorrow evening, starting around 6:30. They sit with two planes, and the weather conditions, if they will remain constant, they will be able to be finished by 9:00 or 9:30. So that is what they are telling us at this point. The weather conditions, there is some prediction for rain tomorrow. So if anyone has seen the 10-day or 7-day outlook, if we do not spray tomorrow evening, there is not a temperature above 55 after that where the company will actually spray the chemical, because they have to have 55 degrees or higher in the evening to be able to spray it. It does not work, because mosquitoes won't come out when it's below 55 degrees. The comment about the 50-degree, I talked to Bill through text and through email and calls way too much the last few days. It is my understanding in speaking to the state and speaking to Carbon Extension, we need sustainable temperatures below 50, and even with the highs that are coming through in the day, we're not going to be there for a period of weeks. So this is part of a bigger plan. We have mosquito dunks at the Environmental Health Office, which we've ordered, I think we have 300, but we've ordered more. Tip and toss campaign, which we've had on the social media page for probably two to three weeks now. But this is a hit on the adults and the larva, and this would actually knock those out that set upon contact, so. I will say with the map that you have and the spray area that, that you received this evening, it was informed to us this evening that the certified organic farms would be not sprayed at all. So we have blocked those areas off for, to be separated from the spray field as well. So that brought that down a little safer for those areas, even though we, we did speak to NCDAs, there was a process to get that possible exemption through those foods, but even better that they don't even go in those areas. So I'm up for any questions, be glad to try to answer. I've got, I've got Carbon Extension and Environmental Health behind me, so we've tried to learn as much as we could. This was a tough decision, to be honest, to, to issue that public health nuisance declaration, because I've never done one before. I will say that the Dibrom, which is the product being used, some call it Nailit, some call it Dibrom, is what has been sprayed in all the counties that have sprayed so far in North Carolina this year. So it was used in Brunswick County for the last 28 years. It was used in Zika in Florida for when they had their outbreak. It's been used all across the United States. It's one of the most popular chemicals that can be used. There was other, two other chemicals. We learned a lot about Delta Guard really quickly. To be quite honest, it's not as safe. And Duette was a new product that was on the market, but to be honest, there wasn't enough proof to know how successful it would be. And the Dibrom, which we've discussed, at an application rate of .6, is about 80 to 90% effective. So that's where that decision came from.
My first question is, is it mandatory or optional?
It is optional. And tomorrow night, if things don't work out, there is not, as I said earlier, there is not a night temperature above 55 after that where we possibly could.
Is this something that happened real quick, or did the Environmental Board, Health Board have a chance to talk about?
Not sure what you mean, Environmental Health Board.
The one that...
The Health.
The Board of Health actually spoke about this about 20, about 25 minutes last Wednesday night. Yes, sir. A lot of good information went out during that meeting.
But this is a result of Florence, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Your conclusion based on the calls you got, the complaints?
Yes, sir. And the landing counts based off those complaints.
I'm just noticing that it looks like the boundary is a river. It looks like you got full calls from down there. I know I got a creek about half a mile from my house. I was down there last week, I think it was, trying to repair some wire, and the mosquitoes ran me out. I actually couldn't stay down there. Had some guy hip him, and he said, "I'm not going to stay down here and work on this." But anyway, I went back down there yesterday with some deer hunters showing them a line. Believe it or not, I didn't get stung a single time. So I don't know whether it's a cool night or what, but they don't seem to be as bad, is what I'm...
They are helping, yes, sir.
The change has been a week since then?
I was informed that seven to 14 days out of our maximum counts, we would still have activity. So we are at day 13 right now. So we are at the end of that day, but they are still in those areas as greenway.
So these dots represent calls?
Calls.
Yes, sir. Calls or complaints, yes, sir.
All right. And how about the application, the end of the visit?
Yes, sir. They went to those areas and did landing counts in some, quite a few parts of those, quite a few areas within those dots.
What, what do you think was the primary cause?
Standing water.
Standing, McRuton?
Standing water.
Natural or man...
I can't answer that.
Both.
Shane was telling me he had to do...
Probably both.
Shane was telling me last week he had seen a bottle cap, and there were 400 or 500 in it, just where a little bit of water, larvae, just sitting there waiting. So it takes, it takes very little water for these things to...
Explain to me again your procedure now, if you don't, you're talking about doing it tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
If you don't do it tomorrow?
It probably will not be done. There was, there was a discussion last week about Sunday evening, and the chemicals, it's only one manufacturer out of the United States, and I think it's out of Texas. So they were not able to get the chemical here in time, but that was the thought process early on, and wanted to get that out there. Also, we met with the Beekeepers Group here in the county last week, informed then, we did, like I said, we did knock that back to tomorrow night, just because of the chemicals. They won't be inactive until tomorrow morning. But it's dependent on the weather, to be honest, as well. But there are other things we can do to help mitigate this in the future, and this will help us establish an integrated mosquito management program, possibly, because this is a good thing either way, for us to move forward and do some things internally, so...
What would happen if the board didn't support the spraying with the money?
The spraying wouldn't be done.
Excuse me?
The spraying wouldn't be done.
The money, the money.
We would be returning it to the state.
Because, you know, we, we had talked about Heath, you know, did they ever answer your question about whether we could use some of the money for equipment?
We can.
We can?
Yes, ma'am.
The tanks you're talking about?
To put on the back of the trucks.
And they've even come as some innovative new designs with drones, you can put the chemicals on and actually spray it up to 8,000 square feet at a time.
Amazing.
That's opportunity for the future, maybe, but then again, we still are looking at the same product.
I know, they used to have, under the City of Sanford, had a system where they sprayed for mosquitoes, but they only...
They do not have that.
Right, they just owned it in isolated areas. Years ago, people would call and complain about it, and they would send a crew out and spray for mosquitoes.
They don't have it anymore.
They don't have it anymore.
I think we asked last, two years ago.
That might be something we want to look at now, you know, the situation we have. Unless we have a lot of complaints in the next, of course, it may not complain anymore, but if we didn't, didn't have a lot of complaints, I don't know that we need to proceed with this. I mean, you know, I'm just thinking about...
As far as the honeybees, the honeybees usually...
I'm kind of concerned about it.
They go in at night, in the hives, right?
They go in in the evenings, and this would be after dusk when they...
Right. So they should be inactive at that time for the most part.
Sure they would be, okay, you think?
EPA information that you have in front of you said that there's such a low dosage, it should not affect them. That's what the EPA document was that went out earlier this evening.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll say, and I'm sort of talking to some of the folks that spoke tonight, I mean, this is a tough call, you know, but I, I have, I, I, sir?
Why you say "not to me"?
Oh, well, I, I have been getting calls really since the hurricane, you know, from citizens that, I know I have one elderly lady that's been calling me, you know, she can't hardly get out of her house.
And she's in the zone?
Yep. And Heath and I have talked about her. She, she just has been literally eaten up with mosquitoes, and, and some families that, you know, try to take their children out, just to play in their backyards. And yes, you can empty your standing water around your home and that type of thing, but there are natural water sources around the county that, you know, you can't control. And, and as I've told folks that I've talked to on the phone and in person here in the last few days, you know, we've, my family farms, and we have bees. And so, and, and we grow some organic things, excuse me, so I completely understand your concerns. But at the same time, you know, we, we've been doing the same thing with the bees on our farm, is, is trying to protect them. But, you know, when we have citizens that are calling, and they're allergic to mosquito bites, and they're concerned about mosquito-borne diseases and that type of thing, it, it becomes a public health situation.
So we've lucked out over the years, because we haven't had the same impact. We've had bad weather, standing water?
Well, I think, I mean, I, I think it has been a long time since, I mean, in, in our area in Broadway, there were places, we had 18 and 20 inches of rain in those three days, and it just, we just haven't had that before. And I know on our farm, those, I mean, those mosquitoes are awful. And I, and I've had people call and say that they had workers that were doing construction work at their home, landscaping work at their home, and they've just walked away from the job because they can't, they can't take it. They're, you know, trying to do outside work and can't.
How long's it take to love what has become a mosquito?
I'm understanding seven to 10 days. And I will say...
I'm just wondering, with all the mosquitoes I saw down the creek, I just wondered if some of them, and I may be out in that field, but if they came in here with the wind, you know, at all the...
And I will say, one of the comments, we were monitoring the social media page over the weekend, and one of the comments was, Dibrom was being reevaluated by the EPA. And actually, that process is what EPA does every 15 years, its standard procedure for that, for that chemical, so. I did hear that on the page.
How it has been used...
About a week together, they, even in our house, they're bad. I was out last couple of days, and it bombed by them all. So I'm sure it's an area, but my area, I'm right up late, so there aren't any problems.
And we had some calls where there were very few, but we also had some that were quite a bit, especially Sheriff Watson in the greenway.
Do these, do these dots here, and maybe somebody's already asked, does this represent one complaint?
Yes, sir.
One, one individual?
Yes, sir.
All these dots?
Yes, sir.
Out of all, this, all, entire population?
Yes, sir.
I mean, to me, it looks like it's, well, it's not a simple matter, but a matter of is the risk worth the reward? I mean, because I, I feel for these folks out here. I don't care what's coming down out of the air that's artificial, it, it can't be good for you. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, but it can't be good for you. I mean, in my opinion, we have cancer and things like that because of processed foods, you know, but I'm not going to go into there. I'm, I'm still not eating organic yet, but I'm working on it. But, you know...
It is a challenge that you see with some of the literature.
Yeah.
I've read some where there is no carcinogens in this, and I've read others where there's still tests being, studies being done. I've, I've seen both of those arguments in the literature. The CDC and the EPA, the CDC said there was not, so...
I mean, here it says it's highly toxic to bees, to freshwater fish, to mallards, geese. Yeah, I don't know. Once again, is the risk worth the reward? What about the altitude that they're flying at? Do you know what it is?
My understanding is 300 to 400 feet above.
Okay. I'm just kind of thinking about the winds aloft and all that, how high they would be flying as far as the wind.
They've been given a map, GIS has given them a map of the territory, they've got it all plotted on GPS already, to block the areas out they need to, and also spray where they need to as well.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, I don't like to get beat up by mosquitoes either, but I also think, you know, frost take care of it, but it sounds like obviously we got a time constraint here. I mean, the thing is, would we be doing this if the funds weren't being allocated?
Probably not.
I mean, I'm just thinking, three years from now, if we don't have a tropical storm, but yet we get inundated with rainfall...
But we also, just not to distract, we also have the opportunity to purchase some things to make the future better as far as being more proactive on this, the future storms.
Well, let's make the purchases and skip the spraying. And how many are on here, exactly? I'm really concerned about that, because I don't know where that plane is going to be flying. Gun down, wood and everything.
That's what that top man... I know what you mean.
It's going right down wood and everything. Right over the courthouse, civic center.
So, so that...
Get out there and work yourself.
Yeah, so Commissioner Reeves gets to the point, so...
They are spraying Hornet tonight.
Yeah, they are spraying Hornet, yeah. Which will get part of Broadway, probably.
If we postpone it for two or three days, can we still do it later? If you keep getting your complaints?
Not from the weather prediction.
We're not going to have the weather to work this out.
Okay, so then, you know, I, I don't need...
There got to be some home kits that you can give to these folks who made that call, and let them take it there.
We were passing out some home kits.
I feel the same way about buying.
That's the dunks for the larva, yeah, which works, you know, if, if you have small...
So we still have dunks?
Yes, they quit coming.
I'm working on getting those out.
We've been pushing a campaign, but they've quit coming in to pick them up.
Oh, yeah? Maybe we told them, then when they called, hey, we have some dunk tanks, we can drop off in your area.
Environmental Health has been pushing it, but we've not had anybody coming in.
And I've, I've told everybody that's called me to go back and get them. I've even offered to deliver them to a couple of people. So just for clarification for the board, if we don't spray, can we still use the money to purchase the equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Reeves, everyone's talking about, I don't know if you've heard, but we do have dunk tanks, we've been trying to get them out, people just haven't come in yet. Haven't come to get them, so they're still available. It's a good call.
Yeah, and that makes, that's all you can do. Sometime, all we can do is provide opportunities to come and get.
That's right.
You have to do something yourself.
And, and also, and, not that you haven't learned enough about mosquitoes and all that in the last two weeks, but I got a call, I think it was yesterday afternoon, that Moore County was purchasing some traps to...
That would be part of the integrated mosquito management program post the spraying, if it was done.
Okay.
Because we'd have to, we'd have to do landing counts and traps to see what's in what areas, be able to specify the type of mosquito, and also potentially what would s... and also potentially what would spray to be able to mitigate that issue in that area.
Okay, so we'd sort of have to start over again to get the traps? Okay, because I mean, I'd never heard of what they were telling me yesterday.
We would do the same thing we've done now. We would do the traps, uh, set up, go out and see what we've caught. Um, if there was one that we couldn't identify, send it off to Raleigh to test it. And depending on the number, possibly, we would be discussing spraying again in certain areas.
Well, and that's, that's what we talked about, that if we could get the equipment to mount the small sprayers on the pickup trucks, then we can go and not, you know, be near bees or organic farms and that type, very much more targeted to the affected areas.
Madam Chair, I got a motion.
Okay.
We're not doing the spraying at this time.
Okay, any more questions?
But by the supplies that we're on campus.
That's right. Prepare for the future.
Okay, to, to, to buy supplies and, and for, for future mosquito vaccination?
Now and the future, ma'am.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Kane or discussion on this?
You know, if you compare the damage that fires will do to an individual versus a mosquito, they're everywhere.
Somebody get rid of your eye, get rid of the virus.
Of course, ma'am.
Yes, sir, okay. All those in favor of the motion by Commissioner Odom, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for all your hard work and for your sacrifice back there in the back. I still, I'm allergic to mosquitoes myself. I cannot imagine two hundred land minutes.
Madam Chair, if I may, to be fair with that, I'll get with Mr. Kane tomorrow to work with the contractor in terms of letting them, or the vendor letting them know.
Okay.
That that was in force.
Okay, okay, all righty, all right, moving right along.
Guess you can get some steak.
And also thank you to our Cooperative Extension folks for their help in this as well. It's, um, it was new ground once again. Thank you very much. Okay, um, the next item, uh, request to appear regarding permission to place a mural honoring Dr. Mary Margaret McLeod to be constructed on the wall of a county-owned building. Mr. Winstead, Ms. Whitmore?
So we go from bugs to babies. I am here in representative capacity on behalf of, part of the Suzanne Reeves Literary Club. Several of their members are here. In looking at murals around town, is that program with the city has developed and, you know, over the past couple of years, um, a number of these folks decided that it was time to honor a woman and they could not find any more fitting person to so honor with a mural in the city of Sanford than Mary Margaret McLeod. Dr. McLeod was a pediatrician who in nineteen forty-six started the first pediatric medical practice in Sanford. That in and of itself was quite an accomplishment for the time. Dr. McLeod was born here in nineteen ten, was valedictorian of her high school class at Sanford High School, and attended the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, graduating with a degree in, a bachelor of science degree in medicine. In nineteen thirty-five, she obtained her doctor of medicine degree from Vanderbilt University.
I'm sorry, what year was that?
Pardon?
What year was that?
Nineteen thirty-five.
That was tough to do.
Yes, yes.
She interned in hospitals in Pennsylvania and Michigan, completed her residency in pediatrics in Los Angeles in nineteen thirty-eight, practiced pediatrics in Georgia for two years, and then was named chief of pediatrics at Little Travers Hospital in Potoski, Michigan. And again, I think as, as, as Dr. Connect just noted, this is a time when most hospitals wouldn't even hire women physicians. After the death of her father in nineteen forty-six, Dr. McLeod returned to Sanford and opened what was at the time the only pediatrics practice between Raleigh and Wilmington. At the height of her practice, she was serving over twenty-one thousand children. Some considered her a private child protective services and that in her practice, uh, she took action she deemed necessary if she found a child that she had believed had been mistreated. Many of the children she had seen over the years, and there are probably some in this room tonight, were treated by her in this very building, when this was a Lee County Hospital. And that would make this wall that we're discussing, uh, the perfect site for a tribute to recognize her contributions to the community. But it didn't just stop there. She worked with then-mayor Tommy Mann Senior, TC Griffin, and Representative Shelton Wicker to create what became known as Lee Harnett Mental Health Center. UNC School of Medicine recognized her with their distinguished service award in nineteen seventy-seven, and she was named to the John Motley Morehead Foundation Selection Committee. The Sanford Herald named her as the Citizen of the Year in nineteen seventy-nine in recognition of her devoted service to the community. She practiced for over fifty years and upon her retirement spent most of her time researching her family's history. She died in nineteen ninety-nine and is buried with her family at White Hill Presbyterian Church Cemetery. The wall that we would like to obtain permission from the county to use is the walls immediately to the left of the entrance of the Department of Social Services on Carthage Street. Uh, there is a square wall and immediately adjacent to that, what my wife referred to as the wedge, which is kind of a wall, but there's a hill ascending up the side of it. Um, there's no request being made for any funding, um, the walls, if you can, the, the wedge is, that's the wedge, and this is the wall that we're talking about over here. Not asking for any money, um, a few of these ladies began talking among themselves about this and just by asking people they knew and said, this, this is something we'd like to take a stand at, have already raised over eight thousand dollars.
Which, did you, did you give a better look at that wedge? Where was that? It's kind of going through.
That's the, it's right there, and they call it wedge. It's just got that hill going up part of the wall, so it's that wall and this right here.
Oh, right, yes, there it is. Thank you.
Um, additional funding is readily available if needed. Um, I think this site would be not only a fitting tribute to this woman um, in recognition of where she practiced, but will also hopefully provide, you know, a lot of inspiration and encouragement to everyone who sees it. Liz Whitmore, who is, um, with, is a historic preservation plan over the public arts and is the public arts coordinator here with the city of Sanford, um, is one who has been more or less setting up the mural project around Sanford. Um, she had prepared a letter, and so not to be repetitive, I'll kind of cherry pick some information from it. To date, uh, they have more than ten murals, four signed restorations completed, and more murals and signs are to be completed prior to June of two thousand nineteen. These murals have brought a lot of recognition to the county. Uh, the arts program has been featured on the Tar Heel Traveler, on WRL, and on other local news and television stations. They've been giving tours of the mural sites to the Moore County Historical Association, Fulton Arts Commission, uh, National Students Honor Society members. Um, program's been recognized by being recipient of grants from NAACP, Lee County Arts Council, Duke Energy Foundation, State of North Carolina, and the city of Sanford. And the total that they have received in private donations, um, to date for these murals is over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And by, uh, next June, they hope to have had in excess of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in public art installed around the town. The process, um, for the mural is, once we have the site located, the, um, Ms. Whitmore prepares a request for proposals, including an outline of what, you know, they're, they're looking for, the location of it, and a timeline for, you know, completion. Um, the RFP is distributed from a list of artists that they maintain, is also posted on North Carolina Art Council listing. Um, it's also posted on social media such as City of Sanford, the Appearance Commission's Facebook page, Lee County Arts Council, and others. Only North Carolina artists are considered for these mural projects. Once the RFPs are distributed, generally they, um, have responses within eight to ten weeks. Those submissions, in other words, a proposal of what the artist envisions after researching and, and Dr. McLeod talking to people in the community, would, since you're the property owner, be brought to you and you would have the opportunity and really obligation to pick the winner. So that, um, you know, what's going to be placed on this building would be your decision. Uh, generally takes, um, two to three months before they can get started on. It's a matter of scheduling on their part, also seasonal issues. Once it's started, they're generally completed in less than thirty days. Um, the contracts that are let for these murals contain a provision, um, that requires the artist to maintain the project for approximately ten years. In other words, it, um, you know, there's some issue with it that needs repairing, graffiti, things like that. Um, they're going to be maintaining it for a ten-year period of time to maintain the appearance of it, so it's not something that just gets put up and they walk away from, and somebody else is going to be responsible for it. Um, so again, all private funding, uh, you get to pick what's going to be there and somebody else is going to take care of it for you. So in exchange for that deal, we would just like your permission to use the site of our building for the recognition of this lady who meant a lot to so many people in this community and really, at a time, uh, that she practiced here in Sanford, uh, was a leader in many, many senses of the word, and we just appreciate your consideration. If I can answer any questions, I'll try.
Madam Chair, I got a motion. That we, uh, issue permission to place a mural honoring Dr. Margaret McLeod to be constructed on the wall of a county owned by the building, uh, building owned by the county.
All right, discussion or, any questions for Mr. Winstead first?
No, I think it was a very admirable thing to do, and I've, over the years, living here, heard a lot about Dr. McLeod. However, I don't think that this board has a policy for that sort of entertainment. And for that reason, I would ask Commissioner Odom to amend his motion to include a referral to county attorney and the county manager to seek information as it relates to the use of that purpose, county property.
We can add that to my motion. I don't believe I can repeat it.
That's okay, that's why we got a clerk. But I think that that's very important. Surely to goodness, there'll be others coming for it as soon as this happens. I don't think we ought to ignore it, certainly take it under consideration, but we ought to have something in place before we accept it.
I, I knew Dr. McLeod, and she was my daughter's doctor. I knew Dr. McLeod from a fine person.
And I know when you walked in the emergency room, when this was the hospital, and they said, who is your doctor? And you said, Dr. McLeod, things happened in a hurry. She had commanded a lot of respect.
That's right.
Any other questions or discussion? Um, I, you know, I think it's a great idea, you know, to Mr. Reeves' point, though, you know, we don't want a slippery slope of, you know, I'm sure y'all understand that, you know, with our public buildings. I've been in, um, conversations, I apologize, my voice is leaving me, with our county attorney, um, just, just for some, um, you know, policy in other places. And I know, uh, we, we haven't had that much time here in the last few days to check, but I'm fairly certain that the city of Durham, Chapel Hill, and Carboro have public buildings that have some public art on them. So I've talked to her and, um, uh, to reach out to get copies of their policies, you know, just to see how they handle things. And I know also, um, again, I'm, I'm a little bit sleep deprived here, but, um, but Kansas City, I think, they have a beautiful public library that has a wonderful mural of books on the side of their public library. And, you know, just, um, to, to kind of get their policy so that we can look to see that, how we can apply that to Lee County. Is that, she, she would be very humbled and say, don't do it, but I, it's, um, it's a good idea. And the murals are great. I, I get so many comments from people that, oh, Sanford, I rode through there, and that's where they have all those really amazing murals on the buildings as you go down Hornet Boulevard. So, um, it definitely has an impact with people going through.
I think the one right over here on the corner where the Sanford Renault was, that old mule in his ear.
Okay, well, that scares the daylights out of me because I remember those days.
They're too real to me.
Oh, well, yeah, I tell you, it, yeah, it, I don't want to, I don't want to go back to farming that way, but it is, they're very, very cool, for sure. Um, okay, so we have a motion, um, to, to work on the policy and then move forward from there. And we'll be back in contact with your group. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, oh, boy, now the proposed, um, Lee County twenty nineteen Schedule of Values and twenty nineteen Present Use Value Schedule. Mary or Michael, Michael? Mr. Michael Brown, good evening. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing fine, I hope you are.
Doing well.
Been a, been a nice evening, so, nicely.
Lots of different issues this meeting, for sure.
Yes, ma'am, so, uh, good evening, Chairman, I run from the other commissioners. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge staff, Mary Al and Lisa Cogner and other staff who's been involved in the reappraisal for their hard work in, in trying to get this project done. It's been, uh, it's going well and, uh, we certainly hope it'll be, um, a, a good project in, in the end. I'd also like to thank Tyler Technologies for the camera factories that we use for software, plus they are also assisting us with the commercial properties, um, by way of Roger Kelly. In addition, I'd also like to thank you. Without you and your time of support, uh, for us, we wouldn't be able to do some of the things that we're trying to, to do and we're working with for this reappraisal. So in preparation for the twenty nineteen reappraisal that goes on the books January one, twenty nineteen, uh, the general statutes require under one oh five dash three seventeen that the assessor present the schedule of values to the county commissioners. So that's what we're doing and will take place tonight. You have a copy of the, the Schedule of Values and the Use Value Manual before you, the Schedule of Value, and that's the Present Use Value Program that deals with agricultural, horticultural, and forestry programs. So the process of approving the Schedule of Values is basically a three-step process. And, uh, you have that timeframe as one of your, as your hand, as one of your handouts. Uh, so the first one we're dealing with tonight, that's the submission of the schedules to the, to the county board. The second item is holding a public hearing. And we respectfully ask for a, a public hearing on November fifth of twenty eighteen. The third item that we would deal with is the adoption of both schedules of the market value and the use value schedules. And we would, uh, further ask for adoption of those schedules on a meeting on November nineteenth. So copies of the schedules, uh, of both schedules will be available in our, in our office for public inspection, and that's by statute. We also are going an extra step, extra step in putting the, uh, schedules and making them available in both the Sanford and the, uh, Broadway Library, so that they can have access to them should they want to review them. Pages are not final at this time. We continue to work on, uh, value. Certainly, the values are reflective of January one of twenty nineteen, so we haven't got to that time and date yet. So we're still, you know, every day working towards building a good value to have as an assessed value for, for county taxpayers. Taxpayers will be mailed a notice of value. Taxpayers will be mailed their notice of value. Taxpayers will be mailed their notice of value. The new values will go out February of 2019. Appeals from those new values can be filed in writing or by mail or by online process. So the taxpayers will have the right to appeal and discuss their new value. They can do it informally. And informally is basically appealing that value and talking and working with staff. Formally, they would appeal to the Board of Equalization Review. They would meet in April to May. And if taxpayers did not receive adequate results from their appeals, they could further appeal to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission or even through the Court of Appeals or Supreme Court or Act or should it be necessary. So if the commissioners would like, we can address any questions regarding the reappraisal at a work session that would take later. As far as public relations, Mary Al and myself have been on the radio show with WDSG 107.9. We've already had a radio show with them and talked about the reappraisal. Close to January, we'll be actually placing a flyer in the Sanford Herald, and that flyer will basically answer commonly asked questions about the reappraisal. And we've also prepared a brochure. We're going to get that printed up before too long. We'll have those brochures available also. And as we go through the process of the reappraisal, we'll continue to work with Jamie Brown on public relations items, social media, and other things of that nature. So this time, we submit the schedules to you and look to have a meeting November 5th for the public hearing.
So we have three things before us. We need a motion for the public hearing on November 5th, adoption on the 19th, and then if there's any discussion, if the board would like a work session. This is for a revow. So just your thoughts.
This is the first time we did a revow in, what, eight or nine years?
This is six years.
Six years.
Michael, can you explain to the board just the difference between a mass appraisal and just the normal market appraisal they would get on their house? So they would, that might help them understand a little bit more what they're getting ready to go through since there's probably four or five that haven't been through this before.
Certainly. It's, it is, it is, it's probably one of the largest county projects that's out there doing the reappraisal in a county. A fee appraisal is basically where you take, for lending purposes or for whatever the purpose may be, you contact a, an appraiser who's certified with the North Carolina Real Estate Appraisal Board. They will look at your property and compare it to three other properties, okay? In mass appraisal, we take the entire county and we value the entire county, which is 31,000 parcels, and we do it on one day, okay? And appraisals typically, if you talk to most appraisers, they say, "An appraisal's good for a day." So ours, by law, is centered around January 1 of 2019, and that's the snapshot in time and date that we'll look at until we do the next reappraisal, which will be four years from now, January 1, 2013. So we try to take the county as a whole and we try to break the county up into neighborhoods and we try to work with those neighborhoods and develop values for land. And then we turn around and try to work and develop the improved part of the value. And then we work through a cost approach with the properties. We also look at a sales approach with the properties and an income approach with the properties should it be necessary. A fee appraiser does some of those same things, but if he's doing it for your home that you may live in, he's probably going to look at cost and sales approach. That's what we would typically do for most residential properties and such. When we get to commercial properties, we're going to be talking about sales approach and possibly income approach. For special purpose type properties, we may look at cost approach for, for some commercials, industrials. But we look at the whole county, one day, value and everything as, you know, blanket value, and it's a large undertaking. We try to break up the county as best we can in neighborhoods. We do look at some neighborhoods and try to compare those neighborhoods because in some neighborhoods we'll have sales and other neighborhoods we may not. But we will try to look and compare those neighborhoods to see if they have similar attributes or such and try to work with them best we can and try to develop a value. We have to develop a value. So we're, we're going to try to develop the best value that we think would be, you know, reasonable for that. And we are a true value state as of the year of the general reappraisal. So we're looking at 100% of market value when we send notices out in January 1 of 2019. Did that, hope that kind of give you insight?
I've got a question that may not have any relevance, but what about people, properties that have been damaged by the most recent storm or prior storm on January 1st? What would you recommend? How should they approach that problem?
We certainly would look at those properties. I would think a lot of these properties have reported their damage to FEMA. For those properties, we are, and I think with emergency management, we have a list that actually we have that we would look at for that. For other properties, we would certainly ask that taxpayers, they can go to the website that we have and they can actually, if they don't have the damage fixed or put back in place by January 1, then they can certainly, you know, contact us by the website and let us know what condition the property is January 1. Because January 1 is kind of that snapshot date we're looking at.
Right.
If they repair it before then, they will need to kind of let us know what they had or.
I agree. That's the whole point. Because some people are going to be caught right in the middle. Some have done some work.
Certainly.
And some have not. Some, some will be fire damage or rehab work. That's the target population I'm thinking of and what should they do in advance while we are preparing for January 1?
Right. They, they can contact our office and let us know of those damages. We, we have information from emergency management about what is taking place and what was reported to emergency management. So anyone other than that.
We have a list from Shane that's 34 properties, I think, that were, that were listed and maybe filed through FEMA of damage. And we're going to go out and look at those in December. We're kind of waiting towards the end of the year in case any of them do repair that damage.
Right.
So January 1 is our reappraisal or assessment date.
And what I'm trying to avoid are other people who would sit back and do nothing until they get that reappraisal and, and you had no way of knowing they're in the middle of rehabbing or doing whatever they're doing. So simple examples are certainly something that I believe in furnishing the general population because you hear a lot of different excuses.
Well, with social media being so active now, that's something that we could, you know, certainly talk with Jamie Brown and see if she could push something, you know, from us to basically say that, you know, if you do have damage, contact our office. Should it still be of that point, January 1 of 2019?
That's right.
We need to be aware where you are at, at that time and date, and we can, we can work with our own.
All right.
All right. Is there a motion for the public hearing and adoption? And then is there a will for a workshop?
Workshop? Wait.
It was just a suggestion. It's not a mandatory thing.
I'll give you a motion on the first two.
Okay.
We didn't know if the workshop would be something you'd want to do in January after retreat or such.
I agree. That's why I want to wait and let it absorb some and then, and then get back to that.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am?
Just to be clear, is the motion to just hold the public hearing for November 5th?
Yes.
And then at that time, you can make the motion to adopt?
Correct. So just one motion for the public hearing on November 5th. Okay. All those in favor say aye? Aye opposed? Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your time.
And Mary and everybody else, thank you very much. Okay, everybody good or you need a break?
Need to finish.
Okay. Yes, sir? Understood? Moving right along then. Okay. Item D, request for approval of bid from Uncle Broadcast Company for a PEG channel system upgrade, Mr. Paul Edwards. Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman.
I'm going to move to approve this one. And I'll tell you why, because I've had several discussions with the county attorney to make sure that all the bases have been covered and it's done and it's a service contract. And one thing that I like to point out to the public always is that when there, and I don't know that we had anybody that could do it, but sometimes we have opportunities for bids in Lee County and we get no response. All we can do is make the effort.
That's right. Can't, can't drag them in and make them fill out the paperwork.
Yeah. I would not want to delay this one. I'd like to.
Okay.
Well, I got one other question I want to ask.
And just real quick, just to clarify, when I had the discussion with Mr. Reeves earlier, I misspoke. The service was the mosquitoes. This was a purchase, but it doesn't matter. The, the three bid will come for construction and repair.
Right.
Same thing. I just wanted to clarify because it was.
That's why we hired you. I appreciate you very much.
My question was, is this money's been budgeted?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I saw in there about $27,000 fee per year. And that's like for four years guaranteed or?
So the $27,000 per year, that refers to money that we actually get back per channel that we broadcast from department revenue? So as long as we operate each channel, we'll get roughly 27,000 per year back.
So you should be favorable at the end of four years.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah. Move to approve.
Sounds like a great point. Okay, any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye opposed? Okay, thank you. One quick question. Was our county website down at any time Friday or Saturday?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. I just had that complaint, but I didn't have that issue personally, so just fact-check it.
And if I could make just one small plug before I go away, and this is really for everybody here and at home. October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month, and we've got some stuff posted on the website, on the homepages there and on the IT page, so just do my diligence and reminding everyone of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was not aware that this month was that too, so thank you very much.
I've got one quick question.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I noticed that you have this State of Florida certificate in here. Is this a woman-owned business?
It is.
Oh.
It is. Yes, sir.
See, you do things the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
I didn't realize.
Okay. Item E, Mr. Crumpton, the emergency bid for a pipe rupture at the clerk's office, and that is somewhere, that's this packet right here with the paperclip that's in front of me.
Yes, ma'am. On October 5th, we unfortunately had a sewer pipe get clogged above the Lee County clerk office at the courthouse. The resulting leak damaged 112 cubic feet of documents. And so we had to go through the state and our insurance company to immediately rectify the situation. So we had to do freeze drying, gamma irrigation, sterilization, cleaning, mold prevention, replacement, and labeling. So this company was referred to us by our insurance company and the state, and we had to take action quickly. And so we did. And the $28,353.86 is above my contracting ability, so I need the board to approve this.
Are we going to get recomped by the insurance?
And we, we have filed an insurance claim and hopefully most of this will come back to us. Thank you.
So move to approve. We accept. Number four.
Any questions or discussion? Is the pipe going to hold now for a little while?
We've replaced the pipe.
Okay. We're good to go.
I told all them girls in the courthouse, the next time we had to replace that pipe, they'd be retired.
Yes, let, let, let us all hope that that's, yes, because that was bad. And I felt so bad for them. Okay. And thank you for rushing to their aid. Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye? Aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Monthly financial report, page 144.
Yes, ma'am. I'm playing Ms. Mentor tonight, so I'm going to give the August and September financial report.
Okay.
As she presented last month, you're going to see a column on all the reports that show encumbrances or new policies we have to encumber, expenditures that we know are going to be for the whole year. So contracts, mainly, and a lot of IT contracts, and of course, he just left, I'm going to blame this all on him, but all the IT contracts that we have, we pretty much encumber everything for the whole year. As I said, I think that's a good thing because it really shows the, the departments how much money they have to spend for the rest of the year. Maybe they will be a little bit more conservative. So in the, in the first month in August, we look pretty good in all areas. Revenues are coming in as expected. And since we had beginning of the year, we're front-loading expenditures. You see that being front-loaded. Sales tax for the month of August, for another month, we exceeded the prior year's month in taxes. Lisa has started including not just what our income is, but what the whole income is for the county. So that includes the city of Sanford and Towne of Broadway. So if you looked at page 150, that total at the bottom for August, or excuse me, for July's sales includes what the city of Sanford and Towne of Broadway got. So of the total distribution, we received 72% for that month. In September, once again, we're still tracking well with the revenues and we have a lot of expenditures that we have to pay early, like insurance and dues. That's why some departments, like the governing body, is showing greater than 25% of expenditures. But you will catch up by the end of the year. I also wanted to bring your attention to page 153. If you look at the bottom in the right portion of the fiscal year ending June 30th, and you look at year-to-date column, you see a negative $5.97 million. If we didn't have the fund balance we have, we would not be able to cover that float. So we should start getting a lot more of our ad lorm revenue coming in and helping with that. So you basically have to cover two to three months of float while you're not receiving property tax revenues. That is the financial report.
Okay. And then moving on into the managers' report?
Yes, ma'am. I continue to work on the courthouse renovations. I have a meeting in two weeks with the register and the clerk for to go over some plans. $3 million is really not a lot of money, so we're trying to make sure it goes a long way and trying to keep expectations realistic. So we'll be meeting with them, making sure we have things addressed well, and then we'll be meeting with the rest of the folks at the courthouse. In other items, Commissioner Odom called me and had me look into something I didn't know much about until I did a lot of research. Lee County, as of December 1st, will be one of only 22 counties in the state who have to have emissions testing along with their vehicle safety test. So this is one of the items I have put on our legislative goals is to meet with our local representation after the election and see if we can't get moved. Since we no longer touch, or since we've never touched Wake County and the counties that around us that do touch Wake County were removed, there was really no reason for us not to be removed. We were the smallest of the three counties around us, but yet we still have emissions testing in there. Depending upon your make and model, emissions testing can be kind of expensive. And I understand they still do it for farm equipment, too. Is that true? So then that can be expensive. So we're going to meet with our representatives and try to get that removed. Not sure why we were left off. Not sure why we were left off, Ms. Oldham, but, you know, Moore, Harnett, and Chatham were all removed in the last round that will go into effect December 1st. So all I can say is that we'll keep working on it, and thank you, Ms. Oldham, for bringing it to our attention. The tobacco warehouse, a new developer, has stepped in. I would like to say that I think our involvement with downtown Sanford, Inc., kind of got some things moving with some other developers when the last contract fell through, so as of this time, the loan request is being pulled, and I'm not sure, you know, what will come transpire in the future, but, so we are out of that deal as of this time.
Let me make a comment regarding that, and I can never think of it, what is our loan program that we talk about?
The revolving loan program?
Revolving loan, always comes.
Yes, sir. Also known as the Golden Leaf.
Right.
Okay, and that was intended for small businesses, and I think, two things, one, I believe we ought to do more to advertise the fact that it is available, and two, the DSI, I think, is a nonprofit, and for them to qualify, we ought to consider changing the policy so that nonprofits are covered, because once you do that, you're sort of stepping into a different arena, I believe.
The agreement we have with Golden Leaf actually accounts for us doing deals with nonprofits. I think the reason they thought that is that we would maybe make loans through the EDC, which was a 501(c)(6).
Then that ought to be a part of the policy so that nonprofits understand that.
Yep.
And I have spoken with the new SAGA director at the finance committee meeting last week, and I think he's going to try to make a push on the revolving loan fund, plus they have a revolving loan fund, and neither one of us have made loans in years.
Comments I hear that it's too tough to.
Well, I think one of the things is you have to not be qualified at a bank, right? You have to be turned down by other sources.
In terms of trying to get the loan, as you just said, you have to be turned down by a bank.
But that's happening more these days than it used to be.
Oh, interest rates going up, that may change.
Yeah, that's true. But I know, just, and I can't say who, but when, at manufacturing day, I was at MerTech towards the wind down of the event, and these three folks from a small business in the county came in and were talking to Mr. Padley and made introductions, and we started talking, and they wanted to expand their business, and they came from another county, Lee County, and they're being, I mean, they're really successful. I knew who they were because of, or what we do, but they were just looking for funding, and it was almost on cue, Bob Joyce walked in to the event, and so we started talking to them about the revolving loan program, and they were totally unaware of it. And it goes back to, you know, the mosquito spraying, it goes to our land use plan, you know, so many things. We have people that, you know, don't take the newspaper anymore, you know, aren't quite into the social media platforms yet, so it is that challenge of how we get the word out to folks, you know.
We talked about that even when we were talking about, hey, if you've got septic issues, we'll come out and inspect it for you and charge you 25 bucks, people don't realize that.
Right.
Hundreds and hundreds of dollars to figure that stuff out.
Right.
And that, we provide that service to them, yeah, almost free, you know, 25 dollars, we don't fix it, we just tell them, hey, here's your issues.
But they could call a private company and have to pay 10 times.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
They didn't realize that service is available.
But the health department, yeah, so, you know.
Wouldn't that fall under your marketing plan, or you getting the information out, or?
Tom, I put our own tax bill.
Jamie's like, I can't work 24 hours a day.
I think citizen engagement as a whole is difficult. You have fewer and fewer folks that really want to be engaged until they have an issue. And then once they have an issue, then they're all in, and it's difficult. It's part of the class I teach at Chapel Hill, and it is, it's a difficult subject to discuss on how to create it and keep it going.
I wish we could kind of get our citizenry into the habit of just checking, at least like checking our county website once a week, you know, when they used to sit down and read the newspaper, you know, on a Sunday afternoon, if they just kind of scroll through our county website and see what's going on, maybe that would be a good idea.
Well, I'll put a plug for our paper, if you've looked at the paper over the last week, we were on the front page just about every day, so.
Yes, 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 oh, absolutely.
People aren't looking at the newspaper as much, it's still a good resource.
Oh, absolutely.
And they should be looking at it.
I, yes.
Buy more papers.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Anyway, put a plug in there.
I still like my paper rather than the electronic version, that's for sure. Okay.
Upcoming meetings, October 23rd, which is next Tuesday, I have in the, it was supposed to be October 25th, but it is October 23rd, at 9:30 is now the rescheduled terminal building groundbreaking, and I know the Secretary of Transportation will be there for it, and there's a chance some others might be there as well.
Okay.
So it should be a good event. Our next commissioners' meeting, we're going back to the twice-a-month meetings, will be November 5th. I'd like to encourage the board members to see if they can attend the Veterans Breakfast on November 9th at 8:00 a.m. I know Commissioner Oldham is there just about every year, and he will attest it is a great event, and this year they're not doing the band attend, no, they're not doing the band entertainment at the end, which will make for a shorter event, so, you know, it's more of a social atmosphere. I think some of the veterans really just like talking to the fellow veterans, and I go every year, and it's a great event. If you want to go, you can call me or call Debbie Davidson at the Richmond Center, we'll sign you up.
You say what day?
The 9th.
That is the 9th, which I believe is a Thursday.
Go ahead and sign me up for this time, too.
Or Friday.
Might be Friday.
It is Friday.
It's Friday.
And Veterans Day is actually November 12th, then we have a second meeting on November 19th, then Thanksgiving holiday, November 22nd and 23rd, and then our first meeting in December is on the 3rd.
Okay.
Want to encourage the board members who have been and want to be refreshed on the essentials of county government, or some board members who've never been, who would like to go to the essentials of county government. The meetings are in Durham, the 13th and 14th of December, in Asheville, the 17th and 18th of January, which might be a little cold, and in Greenville, the 31st of January and the 1st of February, so y'all will keep that in mind. I've done all month plugs for tonight.
All right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Reeves?
I am running for reelection. Please come out and vote for me and my friends.
And your friends.
Who are your friends?
Jay, no, Jay. I know, no, no, no political plugs.
I said what I had to say.
Oh, dear. Mr. Sloan.
You're bringing up the claim he has a friend and it's on you.
Put him on the spot. Well, I'm not going to say I'm running for reelection, even though I am. But please get out and vote.
Yes.
Regardless of party affiliation, whatever, you know, have what's in best interest of the county and the citizens of Lee County at hand, and do your civic duty and vote, so. And I'd like to put a plug in for Kyle, and he helped me last week with a computer issue, and he did a fabulous job. If you haven't been to see Kyle set up in his office, it's worth a trip.
It's kind of scary.
He's like.
But it's impressive.
It can be hidden, but it is really, I was very impressed. He knows what's going on, so, but thank all the rest of the staff for what they do. Really appreciate it.
Well, I just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and thank our staff for what they do, and we appreciate you, and I will throw this in, I'm running again, too.
I just want to thank Russell and his crowd for getting out on the weekend, last weekend, they was over there pretty much all weekend fixing that pipe, so we appreciate that, and I know the girls at the clerk's office do. And I understand Santiago's leaving, I want to wish him well.
Thank you.
Santiago's leaving?
Yes, sir.
Was it, did I spoil something?
No, it's a good time, because I think this is his last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you for everything you've done while you've been here, and best wishes to him.
Sorry, if you don't mind, just a quick second.
Please, please.
I'm sorry.
No, you're perfectly fine.
So it is true, next week is my last, Friday will be my last day, it's Friday the 26th, and I report to SOCOM headquarters down in Tampa, Florida, Monday, 29th. I will be accepted at position as the senior socio-cultural analyst for the pattern analysis team for special operations command Africa, a big title.
Wow.
So I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving myself, you know, my family and I an opportunity to serve this county, and I wanted to thank each and one of you, you know, in person, and I wanted to do that before I left, and obviously I wanted to thank Mr. Crompton for the opportunity he gave me, the faith he had in me, of course. Ms. Joyce, you know, she's been by my side the whole time, she's fighting for me, making sure that I was straight, and definitely Mr. Spivey, you know, I learned a lot from him, and I take a lot of good things with me when I go back to the force, but really the main thing that I want to take with me is what I appreciate the most is the fact that for the past 23 years, 22 years, I was kind of, you know, bred to think a certain way, and I'm happy, happy to take back with me that there's plenty of folks outside the military that love their country just as much as we do, and that is definitely refreshing, and it's definitely, definitely what I needed. But I do want to thank you for all the inspiration, all the hard work that you do for this county, and for giving me and my family the opportunity and having faith in us, and I wrote in my exit interview, and this will be the last thing I say, I've never been afraid in 22 years of things that happen to me, because it is what it is, you train, you go, and you do what you got to do, but that was not the fear, the fear was to retire and disappear, and that was the fear that I had, and retiring, transitioning out of the military was definitely something that was extremely scary for me and my family, so I want to thank you absolutely 100% for not letting me disappear, and showing me that, you know, being an all-crust event is a good thing, and then we have tremendous potential if given the opportunity, so definitely, definitely, thank you.
Santiago, we appreciate your service, yes. You have served the citizens of Lee County just very, very well, and we're going to miss you so much. We considered you part of our family, you know, but I understand being called to serve in a different capacity, and you're serving our country again, and we're thankful that you're willing to answer that call, and we're here if you decide to come back.
Thank you.
I'd like to say I appreciate what you've done, he's really been a great help, so operations, a lot of major parts, and the people that has been associated with him, this gentleman has really picked up fast. What I'm most impressed by him, people I always visit, he never would go above me, and he would come back to me and says, you know, this is what, or this is what, what should we do in our situation, and I truly appreciate that, because when he managed people, you know, we know this is very important to have people that work with you and beside you, that take it very seriously, and that's what he's doing, and I truly appreciate it. So I had seen him go, but I'm happy for him to go.
Yeah, yeah.
So I appreciate what you've done.
We appreciate you being part of our team and our family, yeah.
My support you give us, our talk, thanks, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Well, Godspeed, and please stay in touch.
We will.
Keep us posted on what's going on with you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, yes, please come back and see it.
Yes, sir.
Best of luck.
Yes.
I started all that.
I'm so sorry. I'm out of connect. I love it, I started all that. It's all your fault.
We, I was at the last two home games for San Lee FC, the center soccer team, and they've got a great crowd, over 600 each day, so that's looking good, and they're doing well, and a good bunch of kids, so, that's all I have.
Yeah, come out.
More successful sports.
More success, couple of weeks we'll be having another next home game, so.
Great, okay.
I just want to say thanks to our wonderful staff once again, and a special thanks for Santiago, and congratulations on the new position.
Okay, well, I had my P.O., it is October, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so, you know, wives, moms, sisters, daughters.
Wives.
Yes, make sure that they take care of themselves.
And as well.
Yes, absolutely, and as well, and we have had a challenging month with hurricanes, and then another hurricane, and we just need to keep all of our fellow citizens that are east and south of us, and then those in, well, really, you know, gosh, Virginia, North Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, Florida, I can't imagine what some of those commissioners are going through right now, but we just need to commit our thoughts and prayers, and just more love and more compassion, and less all this other stuff that's going on, and go vote, so.
And early voting starts 17th.
Yes, starts the 17th, early voting. Do your civic duty, lots of people in lots of other countries risk their lives to vote, and it is such a privilege for us to be able to peacefully. At this time, turn over to Doc.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session. For North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a3, to consult with our attorney to discuss the matter of Little River LLC versus Lee County.
Okay, all those in favor of us going in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session, thank you very much. Opposed, okay, we're in closed session, thank you very much. Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you very much.